We welcome everyone to this November 28th, 2022. You know, I wrote it all day long and I don't even remember the day. Meeting of the Corsicana ISD Board of Trustees. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed have been duly posted. While this is a meeting in public, it is not a meeting of the public. If you wish to speak, please register in the lobby and the audience for guest form and follow the information on the speaker form. The board's role is to set goals, approve personnel and budgets, make policies, and provide oversight. We are not here to manage or solve individual problems. Management is responsibility of the superintendent. As a board, we believe that we must educate every child, provide every child the greatest opportunity to learn, and maintain a safest, secure environment mentally, physically, emotionally, and academically. And these are our core values. We appreciate your interest in the students of CISD. Okay, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance performed by Bowie Elementary.
Come on up to the front. Oh, you can, no, use the mic if you'd like to get around the podium, you can use the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Nice job. Can y'all come up to the front please?
Come up to-
Yeah. And we're going to get your picture and we're going to get you to shake hands with the board, okay?
Come on up here.
Take a straight line and we'll all get a picture.
Come on, guys.
Everybody ready? Perfect, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Hey, wait, wait, wait. Now you got to start with Ms. Kelly and shake hands with all the board members.
There you go. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, thanks for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank y'all. Now we're going to have the invocation by Mr. Steve Hayes.
Thank y'all for having me tonight and let's pray together. God, thank you so much for this board and for everyone in this room. And I just pray, God, that you would continue to use them to build a culture within CISD of love, of care, of discipline, of community. I pray that you would make them unified in their efforts. And I pray, God, that you would oversee all their thinking, all their thoughts, everything that they say and do, and give them great wisdom and courage. Thank you for what you're doing in our schools, God. Continue to bless our students and let them know, each one of them, that they are dearly loved and valued and cherished. And I pray it in Jesus' name, amen.
Raymond, was there any audience for guests, you know? We're missing Merrill. Thank you, Raymond. All right, we're going to go into the superintendent's report.
First, our latest edition of Roar Corsicana ISD Magazine is out. The cover feature has almost three dozen CHS graduates who have returned home to work in the district in various capacities. It also includes features on our reigning Teachers of the Year, five new head coaches, and the CHS AutoTech student Wyatt Ware, who competed in Nationals as a junior. Despite being both young and rebuilding, the CHS Boys and Girls Basketball Teams have enjoyed some early season success. The girls' open district play on December 13th at home and the boys' open district play on December 20th in Ennis. CHS senior Jack Allen recently won a state-level competition for his short film entitled Stuck. How very appropriate. About a young man dealing with life staying at home during COVID. He has earned a spot in a national competition in June in Bloomington, Indiana. On Saturday, as part of the downtown holiday festivities, the district elementary and secondary choirs will present a Corsicana Christmas at the Palace Theater. It's scheduled to start at 2:00 PM and it's free to the public. Unwrapped toys and winter wear donations are encouraged. And the next thing we have a demo for, and I'm not sure who is in charge of that, Raymond? Okay. Our ag services team has advanced, oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm going to, I'm going to do the video first, okay? The Fun Town RV Heritage Bowl is scheduled for noon Saturday at the Community National Bank and Trust Stadium. East Central University from Ada, Oklahoma, is facing Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. The Caligos are assisting with stuffing swag bags Wednesday and the two teams will participate in High Five Fridays at all of our campuses Friday morning. Additionally, we will have a CISD commercial airing during the national broadcast of the game, which Mr. Lennox will demo for you now.
This is where initiative leads to innovation. Where characters spur personal growth. Where young tigers become tomorrow's leaders. Corsicana ISD, every tiger, every day.
Thank you. I think you did a really nice job with that video, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next, I want to congratulate our CHS Ag Services Team for advancing to state in leadership development, a Leadership Development Events Competition. The team of Elaine Myers, Jake McSpadden, Braden Herman, Audrey Lible, and Sarah Beck was second in the area event. It will compete Friday at San Houston State University. Ad advocacy placed fifth at area. So we want to ask these students to come forward and they are going to do their competition, perform their competition for you.
Okay, you already introduced them. But the idea of this contest is that they present the pros and the cons to an agriculture issue. And then they're going to open it for questions at the end. And the judges can actually ask them anything they want on Friday. So if you guys have questions when they get done with the presentation, they would love to answer them for you. I am going to preface with that Sarah and Audrey are the con side for this and sometimes it comes off a little aggressive. So do not think that they do not enjoy the farming community that we live in. However, they have to present as though they do not. So take it easy on them on the questions. Make spatten.
Your farming and land use is ruining my neighborhood's atmosphere. It is a constant flow of land, air, and even sound pollution.
My farming is feeding your people and clothing you for that matter. Thank God.
Well, your friends across town are no better. They are constantly using chemicals and fertilizers that are ruining my lawn and my personal garden. And let's talk about the effect that this is having on my children.
Excuse me, Ms. Beck and Ms. Lible, but your homes and neighborhoods were built long after these farms and ranches were started in Navarro County. Perhaps you are the problem here.
Okay, guys, sorry I'm late. I think everyone might need to go ahead and separate before this gets out of hand. Ms. Myers and Jake, why don't you come over here? And Ms. Beck and Ms. Lible to my left, please. And let's talk about this calmly. Good afternoon and welcome to Corsicana Town Hall. Today's topic of discussion is Texas Agriculture Code, Section 251, or the Rights of Farm Law and How It Affects the U.S., Texas, and most importantly, Navarro County agriculture. Rights of Farm is no new law, but it is seeing opposition across the country as urban land continues to grow. My name is Braden Herman and I'm the Navarro County Secretary and serving as your mediator between community members.
The Rights of Farm statute found in Texas Agriculture Code, Section 251, was enacted by Texas Legislature in 1981 and has been sustained ever since. The purpose of this statute is to conserve, protect, and encourage the development and improvement of agricultural land for the production of food and other agricultural products.
More specifically, it limits the circumstances in which an agricultural operation may be considered to be a nuisance. This law applies to all agricultural operations, which includes cultivating the soil, producing crops for human food, animal feed, planting seed or fiber, raising livestock or poultry, producing cover crops or leaving land idle for crop rotation, and much more.
The Texas Rights of Farm statute provides that no nuisance claim may be brought against an agriculture operation so long as the conditions complied and not changed since the day of the establishment.
As urban areas continue to grow and get closer to the farmland that surrounds them, homeowners associations, city officials, and many residents are bulking at the idea of having their family, property, and pets exposed to the aspects of the farming industry. An rift is arising between the farmers and ranchers and the general public.
I'd like to take a moment and allow representatives to introduce themselves. Representing those in our community in favor of the current Rights of Farm law are Elaine Myers and Jake McSpadden.
Thank you, Braden. My name is Elaine Myers. I'm a lawyer who specializes in agriculture law, specifically in the laws that impact the ability of farmers and ranchers to maintain their business, like eminent domain and rights of farm laws.
My name is Jake McSpadden and I'm a third-generation farmer here in Navarro County. It has not always been this way, but my farm now backs up to several houses and even a gated community.
Speaking on behalf of those opposed to Rights of Farm law are Sarah Beck and Audrey Lible.
My name is Audrey Lible and I am the president of the Homeowners Association for the gated community that backs up to Mr. McSpadden's land. I am here to voice my community's concerns.
And my name is Sarah Beck and I live on the opposite side of town from Ms. Lible, but I'm mere 15 yards away from another farmer here in town. I'm the mother of three young children, a puppy, and no personal garden, and I have some concerns as well.
You've already put passion and faculty of concerns very clear earlier today and I'm happy to give each of you the floor to speak in a civilized manner and there are a lot of community members here ready to listen. The only question we have now is that Texas Agriculture Code, Section 251, is?
Right to farm or right to harm?
It is undebatable, though without agriculture, we would all go hungry. The farmers of America feed not only our country and state, but the entire world. What people tend to forget is that agriculture is the leading producer of clothing, shelter, and even medicine. Agriculturalists are already losing the battle when it comes to land and right to farm is not something we can afford to lose.
In 1935, there were 6.8 million farms. That number has dropped to roughly 2 million. Farmland itself has decreased by 31 million acres, roughly the size of New York State over the last 20 years. Meanwhile, the population is growing by 83 million people per year.
As the population and demand for food continues to rise, it is essential that these farmers and ranchers are able to continue their operations. Those opposed to the Rights of Farm law are making requests that makes this impossible. Examples of these requests include only farming between certain times of day, limited to no use of pesticides and herbicides, and even stating that the height or side of the crop is disrupting their view.
Ranchers are facing similar complaints as residents complain of air and noise pollution from animals. It's simply not feasible to expect for a farmer or rancher not to use pesticides and herbicides or it is essential for a successful crop. It is also important that time not be limited since weather already permits so much.
The concerns pointed out by residents are not a vain request. Right to farm and the farms and ranches it is protecting are negatively affecting the health and well-being of the residents, our families, and even our pets. Farms and ranches close to town expose us to chemicals and water pollution.
Chemicals can damage the human and animal immune system through ingestion, inhaling, and even touching. In fact, in order for a farmer to buy or use these chemicals, they must be trained and certified in pesticide application. They must also ensure that there are no other people or animals around. But what about my family on the other side of the fence?
And some people are just more vulnerable to pesticide impacts. Infants and young children, for example. Short-term acute health effects include stinging eyes, rashes, dizziness, and diarrhea. More chronic, long-term effects include cancer, birth defects, reproductive harm, neurological toxicity, and even death.
The biggest issue with pesticide poisoning is that those symptoms mimic those of the cold or the fever. Since these poisonings appear so similar to other illnesses, it is oftentimes misdiagnosed or missed completely. This means that those acute symptoms go untreated and quickly turn into long-term issues.
The need for food in America is clear, but it also solves the issue of how to protect a healthier family. What else can you share with our community members?
Did you know the average farmer only makes around $37,000 a year after they pay what it takes to maintain their farm? Ranchers do make slightly more, about $55,000 a year, but they ultimately get paid even less than a teacher. Farmers and ranchers cannot afford legal fees when they are already struggling in today's economy so much.
First and foremost, farmers like Jake should not be having to fight for something that is already the law. Farmers and ranchers already face the fear of eminent domain and losing their water rights for the betterment of the public as a whole. This is just one more thing that they have to fight to keep their land and their livelihood safe. It could cost upwards of $200,000 to fight these suits filed.
The problem with the nuisance claims is that even if a farmer or rancher can prove they have been in effect prior to the nuisance lawsuit, they're still having to pay to prove it. They have to pay an attorney to write, process, and file summary judgment, costing about $30,000.
Even worse than that, one assumes it makes it to trial because it will. Those costs for a defense attorney and experts are going to jump significantly. Most attorneys charge at least $500 an hour and the cost all the way through trial will quickly surpass $100,000.
We are already asking these farmers and ranchers to feed billions of people and now are we going to take their financial resources away too?
While we are on the subject of money, let's talk about how farms and ranches so close to town are decreasing the property value of residents on the edge of town. The base definition of property value is what someone is willing to pay in comparison to what the buyer is willing to accept.
New builds such as Audrey's gated community and my neighborhood generally have a higher property value than that of older homes. However, this has proven to be untrue for homes that are in closer proximity to farm and ranch operations. There are three main causes that affect property value. The housing market, natural disasters, and the neighborhood.
A prime example of how property value can change in a matter of days is when housed next to these operations. Or when your home backs up to a dairy cattle operation. Maybe your fence can block it from view, but that doesn't mean it goes unnoticed. On top of the sound and air pollution you face, the chance of ground pollution from waste runoff as well. One unexpected downpour and the runoff of dairy is going into your yard.
After the storm, you may face a dead or damaged yard, water pollution, and likely some fence damage. This instantly drops the value of your home and it is only one example. Don't even get me started on the visual and sound pollution these operations impose on our neighborhoods. Again, lowering the value.
I think we probably have time for each child to pick one more time if you guys have another point to make.
Oh, we most certainly do. I know we all seem stuck on the money, but let's face it. It is what makes the world go round. Farms and ranches are a huge part of maintaining the economy even during low economic times. When it comes down to it, we always have to eat and have employees to work to make that happen. Agriculture is the leading source of jobs in the United States.
Though not all those jobs are production agriculture like farms and ranches, they do make up a large portion. Farms and ranches contribute to over $1 trillion to the U.S. gross domestic product, 5% of the total. Texas farms and ranches contribute $134.5 billion of the sum on their own.
Along with the city's economy, local farms and ranches are a huge contributor to the youth of the county. They provide them with summer and part-time jobs and they also support their participation in the local youth expo. Now this boosts the economy, but more importantly, boosts the next generation of agriculturists to feed the world.
Elaine, you make a good point. Feeding the world is no easy task. In fact, many Americans are actually taking it upon themselves to create their own home gardens to ensure that they are able to feed themselves and their families.
Farmers and ranchers are not considerate of the fact that their crops may not be the only thing going close to their fields and causing damage to personal gardens and agricultural plants.
Correct. Many crops have treated seeds that protect them from the use of herbicides such as Roundup Ready Cotton. But this is not the case for many homegrown gardens. If a farmer were to carelessly spray his cotton on a windy day or simply apply too much, it would not only damage any resident's grass, but any small-scale crops they were growing as well.
Similarly, ranchers often have livestock that imposes damage on surrounding land. We are completely aware that these are animals and they don't know any better. But the rancher certainly does. Sometimes these animals get out and destroy lawns, trees, and even fences.
I think it's pretty obvious that you could all continue to tell us your South Rights of Farm issue, but we are out of time and I'm pretty sure audience members have some questions. In summary, Elaine and Jake are in favor of the current Rights of Farm law.
Agriculture is the leading producer in food, fiber, medicine, and shelter in the USA today. Farmers and ranchers are already fighting a battle to feed a growing population with a shrinking number of farms.
Farmers cannot afford to be fighting for a law that is already in place. The minimum fee for an attorney is about $30,000 and it can be upwards of almost $200,000.
And lastly, farmers and ranchers do not only contribute to the economy in the country, but also a small-town America. They contribute to the workforce, food supply, and even the next generation of agriculturists.
Simply, the Rights of Farm law was put into place to protect these farmers and ranchers from the intrusion of city residents into their daily operations. And we cannot afford to lose any more land or any more rights for the agriculture industry.
Opposed the Rights of Farm law are Sarah Beck and Audrey Lible.
Farms and ranches so close to town are affecting the health and safety of me, my family, and even my pets. Farmers and ranchers use chemicals that are unsafe to ingest, inhale, and even touch in some cases.
Agriculture operations decrease property value for homes closer to farms and ranches. Farmers and ranchers introduce air, ground, and even sound pollution into neighborhoods.
Farmers and ranchers use chemicals that damage personal gardens and other ornamental plants alike. Personal gardens are not planted with treated seed like many other crops.
Ultimately, the proximity between farms and ranches is putting our families at risk and ruining our farming.
The current population of the United States is somewhere around 329.5 million people and Navarro County alone has over 49,000 of those residents. One thing cannot be argued. We need agriculture to survive. What limits should be set on those agriculturists as town and country creep close together? Rights of Farm has been in effect since 1981 to protect the farmers and ranchers of Texas from residential restrictions. But is the law still appropriate for the America we live in today? It is clear that Americans are concerned with feeding their families, keeping them healthy, and the value of their property, both residential and farmland. But the real question still stands. Is Texas Agriculture Code, Section 251?
Right to farm or right to harm?
Thank you, we're now open to questions.
All right, I'll ask a question. This is near and dear to my heart. Why don't you move? Because I'm going to, I'm going to give you an example. Before World War II, 25% of the average soldier who entered in World War II was a farmer. Now we're less than 2% of the U.S. population is a farmer. It's actually, they think it could be less than a half of a percent. Output has quadrupled since World War II because of said pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. How do you suggest feeding a country that's growing faster than we're taking the land?
So one reason that a lot of people like Audrey and I are moving to these areas is because the population is going to continue to increase and so the only solution honestly to that is to move it into the farmland. And a lot of people are buying these houses because the realtor is selling them as a pretty view and people just like the look of the house. However, when they're buying, when they're actually living in it, that's when they face a lot of the complaints because they don't know what the farming industry looks like and they, they just unfortunately don't look into what they're buying before they buy it.
And opposed to that, in a county like Navarro, we can't afford to lose any more farming. In our county alone, it's close to 40% to 45% that is involved with agriculture. And every time that these homeowners associations or even residents come in and invade this land, they're offering them money, but they just can't turn down on them because either their crop wasn't as successful as they wanted it to or simply it's way more money than they've ever made. And so it's very hard for them to turn it down and that's why we are facing so many problems with this Rights of Farm law.
So when you see like, like Dallas, up north, and you see that now everything's landlocked that way, so everything is coming this way. So when you see, when you got the drop in 40, when you see, not that drop, but when you're on 45 and you see all the houses that's being built up, it's coming this way. So what is your thoughts on, I'm saying Navarro County, that your people be envisioning that, hey, the land is going to be taken over eventually. So what is your thought on that?
We do, both sides, we do see that eventually, you know, as Sarah was saying, the population is going to be good. So we do have to come up with a solution. And one thing that we're arguing is that there needs to be more education on what the farming industry can have on these residents especially, whether it be having real estate agents go through training or whether it could be just residents in general being more educated through the city council meetings. There just truly needs to be more of a widespread knowledge of what's truly going on.
And there are classes that people can take that are specifically for things like this. And like the Cavalryers Association puts on a webinar for this, strictly for this reason, for more education about this topic.
I don't know if this will help you or not, but you know, one of the things that, my dad was the president of the Farm Service Agency in Anderson County for years. And one of the things they always talked about was how Europe always backs their farmers, always backs their farmers. And they, those countries have starved yet. They, and they remember it, right? They remember starving. And so America really hasn't known starvation since the Third. So there's not a lot of people around that have survived the Great Depression. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps y'all, this or whatever, but just remember that, that other countries, they, they move up. They don't let people go out and into their farmland.
If that helps you or not.
And that Rights of Farm law, it really does not protect the farmer at all. It basically just says, you know, if you're going to change your operation within a year of these residents moving in, they could potentially open a lawsuit and then pretty much have their convenience take over your livelihood.
Y'all did a great job. We want to congratulate you again.
I have one question. I know absolutely nothing about farming, although now I do. But my, what I do know about is, has Ms. Bain and Ms. Kasperzick come to see this? Because they're going to steal all these kids for drama. These are your future drama kids right here. Do y'all like, you need to be in one act. They need y'all in the plays.
They need y'all in the plays. And good luck on Friday.
Yes, yes.
Good luck.
That's really good.
We sure do. Thank y'all. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Like I say, good luck on Friday. Let us know how you do. All right, we're gonna move right along into the Gifted and Talented Program Report.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, distinguished school board members, and Dr. Frost. We're so excited to be here today to bring to you our Gifted and Talented update for the 2022-2023 school year. My name is Jennifer Farmer, and I am the district Gifted and Talented Coordinator. And I would also like to introduce to you two of our amazing Gifted and Talented teachers, Mrs. Kayla Simmons. She works with our elementary students. And also Mrs. Kathy Ware, which is new with us this year, and she works with our fifth and sixth grade students. So we're excited to be here. Our annual Gifted and Talented, we kicked off the year with our Parent Information Night, and at that, we had over one hundred participants of people in attendance. We've been very proud of the growth of our Gifted and Talented program, and our numbers are growing with our students every year. Part of that is last year, we implemented the Naglary General Ability Test. And this test is something that I'm extremely passionate about. The test itself includes verbal, nonverbal, and quantitative tests. They're specifically designed to be both culturally and linguistically non-biased, and that was huge for me. The testing system focuses more on how students think and less about what they know. Some of the systems we used in the past, although they're great systems, you had to have experiences to do well on them. And so this testing system really helps to see how a child thinks. And it shows. We test all kindergarten and fourth grade students for the entire district. And this year, our first grade students, which were our kindergartners last year, we're at sixty-two students in first grade. And our fourth graders that are now fifth graders, we are at eighty-four students. So you can see that the testing system has really gained new prospects for our Gifted and Talented program. Our design of the Gifted and Talented program, we were extremely excited to go back to our old way of the kids actually go to a campus together. After COVID, we started servicing them on their campuses just to help keep them from moving around too much. But we are back to first through fourth grade is half a day at Fannin Elementary each week. Fifth and Sixth is on campus at Collins Intermediate for one hour every day. Seventh and Eighth is GT advisory courses with our GT specialists. We have four GT teachers at the seventh grade level and two at the eighth grade level. Those are GT advisory courses, and the students also have the opportunity to be a part of pre-AP as well. In ninth through twelfth grade, they have the options of pre-AP, AP, CTE courses, electives, and dual credit. Our GT state plan, we follow the state on Gifted and Talented, and we use their Texas Performance Projects to help support that. Our fall projects are in first grade, the Seven Elements of Art, and you'll get to see some of our first graders today. Second grade, extreme weather and natural disasters. Third grade is treehouse amusement park. Fourth is produce a TV sitcom. Fifth grade taco truck challenge. Sixth grade, culture shock. Seventh grade, we are the world and Tell a Tale of a Trail. And eighth grade is the Pursuit of Passion and Corsicana Future City Project. In the spring, we move to also do, so they get two projects a year. In the spring, first grade does Plan a Campout. Second grade, Mad Scientist. Third grade is the Lunar Mission. Fourth grade, Game On Level Up. Fifth grade is Resource Revolution. Sixth grade, Products in Motion. Seventh grade, Tell a Tale of a Trail and We Are the World. So they trade halfway through the year. And eighth grade, Corsicana Future City Project and the Pursuit of Passion. During Gifted and Talented, we are reinforcing writing skills. Something that is very important is for students to find their inner self. And many times through their reinforcement of writing, it helps to build who they are, who their voice is, from inside to out. These are some of our projects. So twice a year, we have a fall showcase, and we also do a spring showcase. So we just wanted to bring to you some of the pictures from our fall and spring showcases this year, or this past year. It was actually the 2021-2 year. You can see it's everything from the taco truck. This is the treehouse amusement park. This is Game On Level Up. So it just gives you a good idea, and our parents and community members are invited to be a part of the project. Huge part of it is we are wanting the students to present and be as great as the FFA students are once they get to high school, right? So that is our goal as well. I have in front of you an invitation for our showcases for the fall. And you are completely invited, anyone in the community. We have it on our website and also social media. Our Gifted and Talented fall showcases are coming up. Elementary will be at Drain, and Collins will be at Collins. Now we would like to bring the Seven Elements of Art. We would now like to introduce some of our very own CISD first graders.
Okay, so my first graders have been hearing all about the Seven Elements of Art. And on the table in front of you here, this is just a collection of their art, just the three of their art. And we have a few more pieces that we couldn't bring because they were still drying. It's pottery that didn't quite get dry enough this afternoon. But they are going to talk to you a little bit about Pablo Picasso. He's one of the artists that we studied. And they have some Picasso art, and some of their Picasso art is on the wall as well. And then I also added a few questions if they need a little bit of help, since this is their first presentation. So you guys can ask them a few questions. Okay, do you wanna, Kathy, you wanna tell them your name? We had a lot of fun. And Stephanie's gonna talk about Cubism. What kind of artist is Cubism? Makes everything like a block? What else you wanna tell about Pablo Picasso? It's really interesting. Do you remember how many names Pablo Picasso has? How many? Twenty-three names. Twenty-three names.
It's actually different.
Yes. Do you wanna show them your favorite Picasso? Why do you like that one? Do you like its color, or do you like the shape?
The shape.
Did y'all have any questions for the artist? Do you have a question? So why do Pablo Picasso start making things blue?
Cool. It's because they're dark.
How did that make him feel?
That's good.
So what, what happens so he felt that way?
He fell in love.
Who did he fall in love with? Okay, well, we appreciate you letting our artists show their. Next up, we're gonna invite over our, these are now beginners, but this was their fourth grade project that they're bringing to you guys, so it's called Game On Level Up.
Five, four, three, two, one.
So this group of students was able to create their own video game that they designed. And Ms. Colani is going to give you a little information on that.
Hey, everyone. My name is Colani. I'm showing you how I created my video game. So the first thing we did was, the first thing, the first thing we did was we added our green blocks, which were any kind of land that we wanted. And if we wanted it to be grass, I can make it grass. And then for the blue blocks, we could just make it water. But water has to be above, above some type of land. So if I wanted to put it right there, and then I can go back and find water. And I can turn that into water. And then we have purple blocks, which you can turn into danger. You find any character, you go to your characters, and you just make it into danger. And then the pink blocks offer any kind of power up. The red blocks are like something that can hurt you. The orange blocks are collectibles, and the yellow blocks are coins. And then, um, whenever we want to play, I just take it.
So the cool thing about this program is they actually were able to publish their games. So I'm just gonna go ahead and put her, where she can see her game. And you guys could go and look this up online and play their games as well. So this was her finished product, and she's gonna try to play the game that she made for you.
We made the game very tricky because we didn't want it to be easy or something like, it just like, they just blew through it. We wanted it to be fun because we didn't think that a very easy game would be good. Can you tell us about what's gonna be going on in this game? Whenever we get, we could see, you know.
You did make it a rusher. So when you actually go across the fight and show them how you created it to lose lives?
Whenever you go across the fight, you die, and you have, you have, you have like six lives. And if you move in life, you start over from the beginning. So you have to try not to move in life.
So you jump all these together, or did you do your own game?
So we had teams.
We did our own games.
We had teams to do.
They are different teams, so they're all gonna be showing.
I had my team, she had her team, Dale and her team.
So I'm actually gonna switch it out and let our next student show you a good job.
We stopped calling for you.
In the best pictures I got at the Chokebox Report here is standing at the little game box.
It's just so hard.
You're like, we should have asked for it.
So, hello. My name is Rachel. I'm in the credit column in the media. And last year, I was assigned to make a video game. I'm a video game developer. So in blocks, you can have this, the game that I made in blocks was called The Rising. Okay, I'm walking out very quick. So in The Rising, there are plenty of power ups, and that's what I wanted to talk to you about. Power ups can increase your health, make you bigger, they can make you smaller, they can make you run faster, they can make you mad. I just wanna go left. And they can make you be able to fly. Okay, I wanna show you how you make the power up. So you go, you click on the, the pink block. If you're up there, you click on the block, you go to the pool that you're up there, you click on it. Then you click on the block, and then you can decrease your health, make your health, get yourself more health. You can make yourself stronger, faster, bigger. You can increase your job power. And you can. Why is that a screen or you don't want? So click the side of the screen, and then. Yeah, that picture really did. Now I'll only show you my game. So in The Rising, his evil brother was trying to, he like trapped him in a dungeon. Okay, and he was trying to escape. But I, since that's fire, I made it work. And, uh, I can't leave, so I'll stick with the team. And now I'm going to... Now I've got the power up. They gave me quite a bit of health on the power session. And now I have a little bit.
So they designed, um, the song that you were hearing, they got to choose everything. They built their own characters. Uh, we had kits with little cubes that they were able to kind of design what they wanted their characters to look like. And then they were able to screen capture that and did, um, replace it with a game. And so they've actually designed every aspect of the entire game. Oh, and who made some new videos?
It's not starting from the beginning, like, how, how did they work on the game?
So we started off with robots, and we worked on coding the robots we built and coded the robot first. Um, and then we, um, had some papers that really let us kind of look at what the video game would look like on a 2D version, and then challenged them to create that or replicate it to a 3D version. Um, and so we would just have little, um, lessons as we went to figure out the program, and they were really fast learners. He's wanting to show you the end of his game here. And hey, you're going to have to play.
Great job.
And Daylon, so you can hit a tiny bit.
Uh, my name is Daylon. This year, last year in GT, we were, our presentation was, uh, creating a video game. My game was called Animal World. We had to code keys and doors for the, they were approaches. And they locked up animals, and so we had to find keys all around the map. And we had to put the keys, we had to make, we had to code keys in the doors to make sure that the keys opened up correctly. Ours was set up a little bit differently than all the other games we've seen. Ours, we decided to make it more like a map where you have to find your way around. And so obviously, throughout the game, you had to try to find the keys and the approaches before trying to attack you. And so I'm going to show you how to code a key in a door. So you go over to this, you go over to this, you go over to the range, you go down. You go and show your door, press the button, that would be door. We wanted it to be, you press this, and then you need to press, you need to push down. And then you go over to this, press on this button, and then you create a key. And because the door is a doorway, you have to make a key open that door. So it would be F. And now, once you press the F, once you go to the right, you're left it, and now we'll be able to open up the door. So now I'm going to show you my game. And our game starts off and approaches. Go up here. Those are the animals that are locked up here. You see the dog here. And once you see the approach, you press the A to try to walk. And you go around here and try to, um, you... The key is right there. You can grab the key from your approach. You grab a hard.
They're actually really fun to play. Um...
The hard, the hard being power is, is you... Can you grab the key? Go up here to try to... I tried to get it out. Then you go up here. Go up here.
He's really fast, but when I was checking over games, it would take me multiple tests to make it through. 33 setting. What was cool is they actually created their animals as well as characters that they did rather.
Puppy.
Maybe part of their process, once they began designing, is to get the people that weren't part of their group to play, because sometimes they, they were able to probably realize, oh, it makes sense to us. But to others, they don't really get why or to understand it that way. And so they really learned a lot of trouble shooting based on using other group sets. Now, you guys, yeah.
Our group, our group, our group.
Stephanie. Stephanie.
Is that everybody? Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Just stay and let your parents get a picture. Step back.
Y'all remember the little people when y'all get home.
Thank y'all very much. We really appreciate that. All right. Performance Services.
We're going to ask Mr. Reese to come up and, um, follow these student presentations with his riveting discussions of air conditioning units and rooftops. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We've come a long way since Commodore 64, so... We'll be tapping on those keyboards. Uh, we have a presentation, I think, is, is it there?
We do have a hard copy in our, in Board Book, but you will need one to speak from, won't you? Um, Merrill's not here, so that's probably our problem.
Here.
Here, I can give you one.
We can share.
We have the full printout in Board Book.
That's enough. Yeah, I can do this. This is fine. Uh, thank you guys for having me. I'm John Reese. I'm Business Development Manager for Performance Services here in Texas. Uh, this is my lead engineer, Cy Danna-Son, and we're going to talk about what we, uh, findings as we walk through the district, uh, buildings and, uh, admin locations to take a look at you guys from an energy efficiency standpoint. And so just a little bit about Performance Services. Uh, we were started back in 1998 out of Indianapolis, Indiana. Uh, really started as a K through 12 energy services company. Our owner had worked for two larger ESCOs and found that he could kind of do things a little bit better, went a bit cheaper way, and a lot more transparent with our customer base. And so, uh, we do guaranteed energy, guaranteed energy savings contracts, which is all tied in through government legislation, which we'll talk about later. We also do, uh, design build in the public sector as well as referendum, uh, help or anything of that nature that you guys will need to, to try and generate some more income or funds. Um, 145 engine-starred buildings, we're certified. We've got about 216 employees throughout nine states here, predominantly in the Midwest, down from, uh, Indiana through Texas and Louisiana, Arkansas, Missouri. And that is our building. We actually built it in Round Rock a few years ago. Been in Texas for about seven years. So from a K through 12 municipal standpoint, here's just a list of some of our customers. Uh, one of our largest K through 12 customers is Austin ISD. Uh, we're actually looking at doing a phase two with them. Uh, Laverne and both are pretty unique. We actually helped them go out and get, uh, referendums, uh, passed. And so they, they chose us to do the design and build work for them. One of them was to relocate a gymnasium, and the other one was to add some, uh, power generation and, uh, increase the lighting at, at one of their football stadiums. During COVID, we had to kind of pivot our business. So with K through 12 being shut down, we moved more to the municipality side and started doing a lot of water projects. And so, um, City of Fairfield, City of Beville, we're actually doing a second phase with them on a wastewater treatment facility. It's about a $20 million deal. Uh, City of Kaufman, we just got awarded Texas Facilities Commission, uh, to do some state buildings for the state of Texas here, uh, moving shortly. So, uh, I mentioned legislation. Everything is tied through Code, uh, 44 dot 901, which basically states that a district can enter into an energy savings performance contract if that, uh, energy savings is either cash flow neutral or positive. And so essentially, the, uh, project has to help pay for itself. Uh, we like to use TIPS as a procurement method because they've done all the heavy lifting. They, you know, we have to certify with them, uh, once every couple of years. And so it's just a lot easier. We can do job order contracts, we can do the energy savings performance contracts, we can do it all through, through TIPS. It takes about 10 minutes to, to sign up. As far as delivery method, uh, we take a look at Corsican ISD as a whole, and everything that you see underneath you guys, we take care of. And so, uh, no pointing of fingers, total transparency. We have, uh, open book pricing policy. We also have a no change order policy as a company. And so if we make a mistake, we eat it. You guys will never see it. But we take care of everything underneath from project design, project management, uh, performance assurance, performance assurance, any controls, outlook, uh, any mechanical, electrical subcontractors. Uh, we get at least three bids on each, and so we try to use local as much as possible because those are your constituents, and those are the guys that are paying taxes in your community. And so, uh, first and foremost, we try to give them the opportunity. As far as the process itself, uh, basically, we take a look at your energy costs, the MNO costs, water energy savings. And right now, you're paying a lot of money to your utilities. You've got HVAC systems that are 40-plus years old. You've got, uh, water conservation issues, and your sinks and toilets, you've got roofing issues. And so, um, entering into a project that's going to curate a new net revenue, obviously the equipment and all that needs to be paid for, but we're going to show a little bit of savings here to help you guys pay for, pay down that project. So we took a look at your utilities, and I think we're a little bit light as we looked at 2018 till about 2021. I think there was some COVID-related hangover from there. Uh, and so the numbers that you're going to see are pretty conservative. Uh, we think that, uh, once we do a deeper dive into the utility spend, that, uh, it'll, it'll offer a lot more savings than what we're projecting here today. So on the next slide, uh, as far as the, the scope of work, we took a look at your HVAC systems, district-wide. Um, a lot of these systems are running on R22, which is no longer available, illegal. Um, talking to your staff, your facility staff, and Ben and Brad, and several months, you guys have paid over $12,000 just to get R22, if they can find it. If not, they're trying to look at other measures as far as adding new compressors and things of that nature, which are costly. Uh, of the staff of four that's in charge of HVAC, they're all basically just chasing leaks and things of that nature, trying to fix repairs. They're really not doing the normal work order stuff. And so a lot of that income that's going towards that is just spent on you guys chasing, chasing, uh, leaks and, uh, defects and, uh, failures. So the new refrigerant is R410A. It's a lot more friendly to the environment, uh, a lot more readily available. And then the HVAC, HVAC units themselves, I mean, you look at the bottom left, those units are from like 1989. So I'm surprised, I was, you know, looking at the manufacturer going, wow, I need to put these in my house. They lasted, they've lasted this long. Uh, you're not able to track a lot of the, uh, units as well. As you look at the wall stats there, you know, today's technology will allow you even on a cell phone to take a look and see, you know, how that, uh, system's being utilized and how it's performing. You guys don't have that capability right now in about 50% of your units. And then the units on the high school, that's one of them, they're, they're completely shot. There's been a few replacements, kind of one-off, uh, as you can find, uh, product, but for the most part, the majority of those, I think there's 512 or 13 and 437 need to be replaced. It's a good big number. Dr. Frost asked me to kind of break down the HVAC replacement unit quantity as well as the Wi-Fi thermostats. The reason being is that, uh, Ben and his staff have been replacing the, the thermostats with Wi-Fi stats as they can find them, they become available. And so if you look at the high school, like a high school and a middle school is all pretty much new as far as the, the controls are concerned. And so we didn't put those in the numbers. But, um, it's a pretty heavy lift for 400-plus units, about $13 million in cost. Um, Wi-Fi thermostat replacement costs of what's left, uh, looking at about $140,000. And then we can save you $50,000 per, per year on that. So the next scope was lighting, and we really just looked at, I guess you guys did a lighting project with E3 some years ago, five or six years ago. And so from, uh, from a school standpoint, the only ones that really need to be addressed or drained, and I know you're still trying to figure out what to do with that campus, and also the athletic fields. So the football stadium, the baseball stadium, the softball stadium, the tennis courts, things of that nature have not been done. You guys are using metal highlights right now, really costly. You know, they take a, a long while to heat up, so they come on. So if you've got a football or soccer game or something, and you have to go out an hour ahead of time and turn them on so they get the heat up. Uh, Ben and his staff are replacing the bulbs with one-off, which is pretty expensive and costly. And then you got to get someone to hire boom trucks that can get off the lift and climb up the pole. And if you've ever been on one of those, those poles don't stop moving. So commend the guys for getting up there. And then we noticed in drain, you can see the different coloration of the lights there. Uh, a lot of those lights are, are fluorescents and, uh, either burned out or offering very poor light quality. And so we'd like to take a look at that as well if you decide that you want to move that, that route. Uh, next on our list was the plumbing. So from a water conservation standpoint, you guys have got really old toilet sinks, urinals. Uh, if you look at the bottom picture there, the, uh, second urinal from the right, I believe, is that in drain? That's in drain. Uh, Ben was saying that that thing's been running for six straight years. So it was running the whole time we were there. Never shuts off. And so you're losing a lot of water, uh, based off of that. And then a lot of your fixtures are older fixtures with higher flow or standard flow. Now we've moved to the low-flow sinks and toilets with, uh, sensors on them to turn themselves off and things of that nature. Kind of take the human area element out of, uh, the, the technology, or with the technology. Uh, the next was just your walk-in coolers, and this is something that we just kind of recommend. We noticed a couple of them, the, the doors were partially open, but freezer was still on, and, you know, cold air is blowing out. And so we'd like to put a little bit more controls on those, and so you could tell ahead of time... And so you could tell ahead of time before something was going out. And if something went out on a Friday, you know, you weren't back until Monday, then you have an opportunity to, to lose food and things of that nature. And so, uh, and it's not a whole lot, it not, doesn't add a whole lot of cost to the project itself, but gives you that added level of context or, uh, confidence in knowing when and if those, uh, materials are gonna fail. And then I think lastly was the roofing. So the high school roof and drain roof really need to be replaced, uh, drain especially. But the high school roof, we think that there may be an opportunity to repair some of it. It is a, uh, built-up gravel roof. And you can see in the picture here that you guys have been chasing leaks. They brushed the gravel away to try to find leaks. And there's several ponding areas of standing water there, which is not efficient. Um, and rumors of several leaks there inside the high school. And so we would, we didn't add that to our overall numbers, because we're actually, if you're interested in doing that, we want to have someone to come out and walk it. We've got several roofing companies that, uh, specialize in, in K through 12 market that we could bring out and give you guys a quote. I don't want to tell you that you have a new roof if you don't need a new roof. If we have, uh, means of getting it to last another 15 years or so, then we, we'd like to do that. So from a UCL matrix standpoint, um, we didn't look at the middle school, because it's fairly new. Uh, the high school had some controls and HVAC and things of that nature that were already done. And so, uh, from a power conditioning standpoint, and this is something that we like to do anytime you're changing out light bulbs or HVAC systems, it just allows you to monitor the, uh, output of, uh, all of your appliances and all your equipment, your computers and things of that nature. So the, the microwave in the teacher's lounge isn't drawing too much ampage unnecessarily and pulling from other units. It also protects if there's, uh, lightning strike. And so anytime we're doing anything electrical, we like to add that. And again, it doesn't add a whole lot of cost to the, to the project. Uh, LED lighting at drain and also the, the ball fields at the high school. Uh, HVAC roof, uh, roof replacements everywhere from, uh, the admin center down to the high school. Again, everything aside from the middle school. Uh, plumbing retrofits, your Wi-Fi stats, and then your cooler. We did talk about solar PV as an option. We do have an in-house solar team. And so we understand you guys have some land. And so there's, uh, Inflation Reduction Act that's been signed through our government that will allow the government to pay up to 30% of the total cost of that system. And so it really brings your return of investment way down. But that's something that we could talk about at a different phase or a different time. And then again, the roofing repair and the general generator, we could, uh, source those items for you as well. So from a cost standpoint, um, you're currently paying a little over a million dollars a year in your energy. Uh, we think we can save you about 15% on that. And these are conservative numbers. Again, guys, we'd have to do a deep dive, uh, and really take a look at 2022 numbers and see where, where you actually are. But total project cost of, of 15 million, uh, payback of 14 years, which is pretty good. The, um, legislation allows us to finance after 20 years. And so we do have several finance partners. I actually contacted one, they're familiar with you guys. And, uh, the numbers that we show on the project cash flow, the next slide, are actually real numbers. And so for $15 million, I believe there's $3 million mentioned of Esra funds left that can buy down that rate. Uh, 20-year finance term, interest rate of 4.9%, which is pretty current, just got that, uh, confirmed about two days ago. Uh, we do have investment verification costs. So one thing I think I failed to mention is it's guaranteed energy savings project. Anything we tell you we're gonna save, we have to guarantee. And that's in writing. And it's all verified through a third-party engineer that's not associated with us, not associated with you. There's about six or eight of them here in Texas. We can give you their names and it's up to you guys to, uh, get them involved. But, um, so if I tell you I'm gonna save you this $5.5 million over 20 years, if in any one of those years we fall short, I gotta cut you a check to make it whole. So if we're saving a million dollars or whatever we're saying here, you know, 300, 400,000 a year, if I'm, I'm 200 short, I gotta cut you a check for the other two. So it's all tied through legislation. So if you look at the next cash flow side, uh, looking at year, really seven, uh, becomes cumulative, a net benefit there. You know, once the equipment is starting to be paid off and, uh, you get more into the principal instead of the interest. But the last, last page here is just, uh, some next steps. So we're, we've done a preliminary analysis, so the next stage would be an investment-grade audit. Uh, it's a lot more in-depth. We actually bring in contractors, whether it be mechanical, electrical, water, have them compete for the business, you know, all those go directly to you. It takes about 90 to 120 days with the holidays to get that done, get that accomplished. And so we're looking at somewhere, I think we can get it done by March. And we'll put Cy on the hook here and say, yeah, Cy can get it done by March. So come back to you guys for board approval, uh, anticipating that sometime early April. And, uh, be ready to move out and get everything going by summertime, which would be, I think, ideal for you guys, if students are out of school, things of that nature. Now, there is a caveat that supply chain issues are rampant. So we really have to take a look at what's available from an HVAC standpoint. I can't tell you that the buying power of buying 400-plus units, it carries a lot of weight, as opposed to trying to do them as a one-off. And so we would, uh, put our best foot forward and work with you guys on the vendor of choice. If there are three that want to compete for the business, then we'd get those quotes for you and let you guys decide on who you guys wanted to use. Uh, there is a backout fee associated with the investment-grade audit. And we're gonna spend a lot more than $38,000, but we just ask that if we find a, a project that makes sense and, and fits the legislation, and for some reason you guys decide not to move forward, uh, that you would help us off with, help us out with those development costs. And so, again, we're not, I think I mentioned before, we're not in the business of selling IGA's, we'd rather have the business, but, uh, we would like some help if, for some reason you guys decided not to move forward. So without that, I'll open it up for questions if you guys have it. You know, I got my tech guys, if you guys are technical, we can answer those, but. Had you guys had time to go through the presentation before? Did you?
Yeah, I just wanna make one comment, and that is that at the next board meeting, we'll have, we're going to receive a demographer's report. So we'll know a little bit more about what our enrollment, um, is going to look like and we'll be able to know some more things about, we'll just have a stronger conversation about what happens with drain, what the utilization needs to be. I mean, right now we have DAP, we have several offices over there, we have the wraparound center, so we're utilizing the building. But we really don't have students there other than DAP. And we don't know what the future might hold for our enrollment numbers, but we'll know a little bit more about that at the next board meeting. But, you know, this is really, um, an opportunity for us to look at our buildings and analyze where we are, um, look at what we're going to be needing in the future. Um, some of the numbers on air conditioning units are, are pretty shocking. We just had all four units go out on top of the main gym at the high school and we were really, really fortunate that we were able to get two in. Um, and for those two units, it was a total cost of about $60,000, because it's everything from the units themselves, the installation and renting the cranes and those sort of things. So we were just so happy to find two air conditioning units. So that supply chain issue is, well, they told us about six months on AC units. So this is, um, very timely and, uh, a lot of information to, to take in. But we've got to look at enrollment projections and we've got to look at just what we can afford. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Does anybody have any questions for them?
No.
Hey, thank you all for coming. You're giving us a lot to think about.
Thank you so much.
So Dr. Frost is gonna do the first reading for us.
I'm filling in for Ms. Howell, who is, um, would love to be here, but she is ill tonight. So what this does is it modifies three policies, um, CO, COA, and COB local. And has to, all three of these have to do with food services. CISD is a community eligibility provision district, which means that all of our students receive breakfast and lunch free. So what it allows us to do is to, um, utilize, um, for example, at breakfast, if our students have apples and not all the students want to eat their apples, they can put them on a, a spot. Um, there's a process. And then if somebody else wants to take the apple, um, and take it home with them or something, or to eat it there for lunch, they can have access to that food. Um, COA, um, allows the Director of Child Nutrition to oversee and use the, um, the funds and to develop the necessary processes for, um, purchasing the foods that we use. And then in COB, it just says that we will provide regular meal services to students at no cost, as authorized by the US Department of Agriculture. It just continues that process for us. So this is, these are information tonight, and, um, with your permission, we'll put these on the consent agenda. Unless you have questions or any, need any more information, we'll put these in the consent agenda, um, as action items at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Do I hear, hear a motion? I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it and we've approved the consent agenda. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go into closed session permitted by Texas Governance Code 551 dot 01. Thank you.